Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is now 7:17 PM. Welcome to tonight's Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of Monday, May 5, 2025. Members of the Planning and Zoning Commission in public may participate in the public hearing of May 5, 2025. All participants will be able to speak when called upon. At this time, I would like to explain the procedures to be followed during the meeting. The Commission has both a consent agenda and an agenda for consideration of individual items. Items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and non-contested. Item number one, citizen comments, provides the opportunity for members of the public to address the Commission on items that are listed on the consent agenda. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes, and the secretary will let you know when one minute is left. For all Plats and plans conditionally approved or disapproved by the Commission, the applicant will be provided a written statement of the conditions for the conditional approval or the reasons for disapproval at the end of the meeting. These conditions and reasons are not arbitrary. They are directly related to the requirements of Local Government Code, Chapter 212, and include citations to the law that is the basis for the conditional approval or disapproval. For individual consideration items, I will call the applicant or his or her representative to present the case. The applicant will have up to five minutes to present the case, which includes all persons representing the application. Then those wishing to speak in favor and those wishing to speak in opposition will have up to five minutes each to present his or her comments. Prior to speaking, please give your name and address. Remember to speak directly into the microphone as this hearing is recorded for public record. Any handouts you wish to provide should be given to staff. Please do not approach the Commission. The next meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission will be Monday, June 2, 2025. The next item on the agenda, citizen comments on items listed on the consent agenda. April, has anyone signed up to speak on any item on the consent agenda?
No one signed up. Please proceed.
Right. Secretary Merrick, would you please read the consent agenda into the record?
Yes. The first item is the approval of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting minutes for Monday, March 17, 2025, and Monday, April 7, 2025. I have two replats. Number 2025-86 PL, Beltline Industrial, located at 4250 North Beltline Road, and 2025-79 PL, the Montessori School of Valley Ranch Edition, the revision, located at 1201 Ranch Trail.
All right. So we have three items on the consent agenda, and on the minutes for the April 7, 2025 meeting, just a reminder that there was a slight revision that's in the copy that was provided to you at the beginning of the work session. So that's the one that we're looking at in terms of the consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval of the items on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion for approval.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second for approval of the three items on the consent agenda. Please vote. All right. And the motion passes unanimously. And then we have the consent agenda for disapproval.
For disapproval, we have two, 2025-127 PL, Malarra at North Main Street Edition, 715 North Main Street. The second one is 2025-128 PL, DFW Freeport, 16th installment, located at 8711 North Freeport Parkway.
All right. Do we have a motion for disapproval of these two items on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion for disapproval.
I have a motion.
I'll second.
And a second for disapproval of items five and six. Please vote. And the motion passes unanimously. Now I'll move on to the individual items. This is item number seven, conditional use permit 2024-447-CUP, located at 2700 North O'Connor Road, Suite 124. Is the applicant present? Ma'am, would you mind coming up? If you could state your name and address for the record.
Yes, it's Elizabeth Reyes, and it's 1120 Windmill, Irving.
And it was discussed some during the work session, but I wanted to give you a chance to present if you had anything further you wanted to say.
Um, no, I think I'll just answer, how many minutes did I have? I'm sorry, two?
Five minutes.
Five minutes.
To present, and then, but any time that the Commissioners ask you questions don't count against that. So you can go ahead and you can present for five minutes if you would like, or less, whatever's good for you.
Um, well, I did want to present. I apologize. I thought we had a little bit more time. So the applicant is Yuri Reyes, but I'm here to represent because she wasn't able to attend. But we just wanted to address some of the concerns as far as the opposed letters. And then in addition to that, we wanted to mention we are new owners. We're not the previous, we are aware that there was previous owners there before, in that there was a event center before, right next to it. But we would be actually like three units down from the salons and the plaza, which are the ones that are opposing to our event center. Let me see. In addition to that, we wanted to talk about the parking. We did stop by a couple of times just to, you know, to take a look at what's, as far as the parking. And can I share here?
Yes, yeah, they'll turn it on so it shows up.
And so this is a couple, am I sure I know where I?
Yeah, great.
And we just took a couple of pictures, different days and times, just to kind of show the parking. This is how usually we drive by there often. So this is how the parking looks as far as, you know, it's not full. I know that they mentioned that we would take up a lot of their parking. A lot of these businesses do operate, well, they do operate throughout the day. A lot of our events would take place on Saturday and Sunday. And I think the latest one of the locations or one of the businesses do close. It closes at 8:00 PM, and some of them are even closed on Sundays and close early on Saturdays. In addition to that, let me see, sorry. As far as the noise level, again, as we mentioned, we would actually be three units down. The salons and the plaza, which are the ones that were opposing to it, speaking about the noise, in there, in the salons of the plaza, they're a cosmetology service provider, and they always have their dryers and all sorts of beauty appliances that are loud, as well as some of the music playing in the background. And we are aware of this information because, you know, we have gotten service from there before. But let's see, other than that, and also just to point out, as far as the church, there was a church. I know that that was another concern. We haven't, we're not aware that there's any opposing to anyone from the church as far as for our event center. And I think that was, I don't know if this, this is a different one, I believe. That's, that's it. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Do any of the Commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Ms. Ahmed?
Um, what do you expect or what's your capacity for the event center?
What's the capacity?
Yeah.
Um, I don't recall, I don't have my notes here as far as the capacity, sorry.
So if there's an event coming in, what size event can you take up?
Oh, it would be, as far as the capacity, I believe it's anywhere from 150, I believe, people, if I'm not mistaken, around.
Does the staff know what the capacity is of the event center?
I don't know if Herb, if Herb is here, whether he are, based on the square footage for the.
Hello, Commissioners. Herb Gillan, Assistant Building Official here. Do we know what the square footage is on the building right now? It's 200 square feet? Is that what it is?
Uh, three.
Three, 300 square feet. Basically, you have seven square feet per person that you're allowed for occupancy level. So that's, give you a rough estimate.
I was really bad at math.
I'm not even, we actually have a chart in our code books that gives us that, but it's.
Divided by seven. So I appreciate you showing the pictures about the parking, and I see that a lot of those pictures show that there's empty parkings, maybe some businesses are slow, some are busy. Few concerns I have, I see that there is a couple martial arts studios there, so you have evening customers at that time, and each of the, each of the parents, they're usually there for at least an hour or maybe a little bit more if they have multiple kids. So that's a concern I had. But a question for you would be, you know, hopefully you guys get really popular and you start getting a lot of people in the daytime you're renting to the corporate folks, in the evening you're renting for social events. How do you plan on augmenting any kind of parking issues that you will run into? Let's say you have two other businesses that come in that actually become popular, they start getting more people, coffee shops that have about hour, hour and a half of folks that sit there.
I do apologize. I didn't quite understand your.
How would you augment the parking situation? If you run into a parking situation, have you guys talked to any neighboring businesses to see if you can get any agreement with them?
Um, no, we have not talked to them. What we were going based off or looking at was basically their hours of service or hours that they're open. And for instance, the karate place, as well as the salons and the plaza, they're both closed on Sundays. The karate place is open on Saturdays only from 10 to 2:00. So our events would take place anywhere from 5:00 to 6:00 in the afternoon, and it would be against over the weekends.
Am I correct to assume that you're not restricted to weekend business? And you can take weekday business as well?
Yeah.
So if a corporate comes and they want to do some kind of event during weekday at 3:00 or 5:00, you would entertain that business?
If, yeah, and we would talk to, again, to our neighbors, our business neighbors.
Okay, thank you.
What are your hours of operation?
Um, well, we haven't said, well, actually, no, the hours of operation would be from 5:00 PM as discussed, if I have my notes right, 5:00 PM to 2:00.
And what do y'all plan to do with security?
Um, we would be hiring a officer as far as security. We were told we, for an event center, when we came and got information on that and we asked about it, we were told that we were able to hire an Irving police officer.
Okay, and alcohol?
Um, it would be bring your own.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant?
So just to clarify, it's 5:00 PM to 2:00 AM.
Yes.
Correct? Thank you. No other questions? Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of this item? Anybody who'd like to speak in opposition to this item? No? Then I'll close the public hearing and return it to the Commission for discussion and a motion.
I'm just gonna give my opinion on this case. The, I cannot support this case, given the proximity to the residential neighborhood on the back. I think it's literally like almost a zero feet, it's right, right there, the closest neighborhood, and that's really the reason, so the applicant knows why, at least on my case, I'm not able to support it. It's just too close to a neighborhood that I know it will, I mean, you're gonna be up until 2:00 AM, there's gonna be music, I mean, we cannot compare it to a blow dryer from a salon, from a hair salon, or, so that's the reason I won't be able to support that case.
Ms. Ahmed?
Yeah, I'll echo what Commissioner just mentioned. And then, you know, the hours kind of collide with some of the other businesses that are there after 5:00. So if an event starts at 6:00 PM, you still have those martial arts studios that are open at that time. And I know for sure that a typical park time at martial studio is a little over an hour. Then you have salons, and their services are over an hour. It could easily collide, and there's no, there's no guardrails around this. And the risk is you have a residential area in front where the parking can overflow, and a police would not be able to stop that because that's a city parking.
Any further discussion? Or do we have a motion? Well, I appreciate those comments and recognize the staff recommends denial, so if there's no further discussion, I'll make a motion to recommend a disapproval for case, zoning case number 2024-447-CUP.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second recommending denial. Please vote. And the motion passes unanimously. Now ma'am, this does mean, it still does go to City Council, and they're able to do, make their own decision on this. So, just so you know. All right. Going on to item number eight, zoning case 2025-55-ZC, located at 2525 West Lyndon B. Johnson Freeway. Is the applicant present? Yes, oh, yeah. Would you like to come up and present? If you could state your name and address and?
Janet Reed, 6200 Westchester Lane. I just wanted to answer some questions during the work session. You had some questions. It is a variance for eight parking spaces, and they do already have a lease in place for parking spaces next door. That's good till 2033 with three five-year extensions. So they got parking worked out. Any questions?
Do any of the Commissioners have questions to the applicant? No? Ms. Denny, did you have a question? No? Okay. All right. I think you're done. Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of this item? Anybody in opposition? No? Then I'll return it to the Commission for discussion and a motion.
If there's no other discussions, I recommend zoning case 2025-55-ZC to be moved to City Council for approval.
I second.
We have a first and a second and a third. All right. Recommending approval. And the motion passes unanimously. All right. On to item number nine, comprehensive plan amendment 2025-64-CP, located at 251 O'Connor Ridge Boulevard. Is the applicant present? Sir, do you want to present on this and the next item at the same time?
I will. We have five minutes for each, right?
Yeah, so it's 10 minutes altogether, and you can do it as five and five or one time.
Yeah, we have our architect here who will go through part of this presentation. I'll do just the front end and then turn it over to him, and then we'll, we'll follow the flow as it goes. I'll make sure I, do I just, to move this forward on hours, what do I need to do here? Do I, just roll it? All right, I got it.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm old, but I'm smart, I got it.
Your name and address, sir?
You use arrow keys, too.
Okay, good. All right, I appreciate it. Okay, first thing I want to say, you see, it's the St. Andrews Residence. I'm Dixon Holman, 7304 Bay Chase Drive, Arlington, Texas, here on behalf of Pape Dawson Engineers, 201 Main Street in Fort Worth. The, what we're here to talk about today is a project in Los Colinas on O'Connor Ridge Boulevard. And right now, it's been called as a placeholder, St. Andrews Residence. We had a meeting with the residents of the neighborhood last Monday, and they pointed out that it's a street, St. Andrews. And so they said, maybe we don't need the confusion, we agree. But for now, since it was already on our presentation material, this is just a placeholder. We'll come up with a name that works as we move forward. And so what I want to show you, this is the existing site as it exists today. There is a three-story, 95,000-plus existing office building that's vacant, that sits where you see it located on the, on the site plan here. Behind that, there used to be a parking garage. That parking garage collapsed, as you may know, and it was torn down by the property owners, our clients, at their expense, and approved by the city and removed, and it's been cleared now. And so that property is vacant and has been leveled. And it sits behind this three-story office. The three-story building is on a bluff, so if you take the three stories, it's really approximately five stories as you look at it from across the street at street level. And then it drops down behind it. There's a grade change as you move to where the parking structure was. And what we are proposing is to reuse the current office building. It lays out very well for condominium units. We're proposing 34 units there. These will all be high-dollar-for-sale condominiums. We can't, we're coming in as multifamily because that's the only place under the code to come. There's, there's not a for-sale residential condominium option. So we're coming in as multifamily. These will not be for lease. They're not apartments. They're well-appointed. Building one will have an average $700 per square foot value per unit, and building two will be closer to 1,000, with aggregate over the project about 3,000 square feet for the units, going from about 2,600 feet up to about 4,900 feet, square feet. And it'll be in the second building about $1,000 per square foot. There was some discussion, I know in your work session today, about the two parcels and why they're there and how that affects open space and setbacks and so forth. The reason that is, is because we're gonna have two separate homeowners associations. They'll both be governed by those associations so as to keep the expenses contained to the building that those residents live in. If they're paying their homeowner's dues, we want that dues to go to their building where they live, and then the others to the building where they live. That's why we'll have two pools, et cetera. The parking will all be per parking structures. It was referred to today in the work session as a 14-story building. It's actually, from grade, it's really a 12-story building because the parking garage goes down underneath the building as a pedestal. You can see it from the back, but you can't see it from the front because of the way it slopes. So just why, I wanted to make that clear. We still understand it's 12 stories, but it's not 14. If this property were developed as office, we, I know you had the discussion today about how far it could be if we moved some things around and all, and it were, our clients don't want to do that. We believe it's antiquated use. We believe right now this is phantom, about $100,000, 100,000 square feet, I'm sorry, a phantom office space that is on the vacancy rolls, that shows up in those numbers for Los Colinas and for Irving overall. And we think it's antiquated, and its best, highest and best use would be residential for sale that would match the types of lifestyles and amenities that those who live around it right now, or live around the site, have and are used to, and we feel like we'd be a great neighbor. I want to point out here that there were some items in the staff report, as you see there, A, B, C, D, and F, that talk about the land use interpretation policies under Goal One of the Land Use and Urban Design Section. And it says the City of Irving should, not shall, but should require the following, and it is those, those A, B, C, D, and E. Is it physically appropriate, i.e. size, shape, et cetera? We believe it is. We believe, lays out very well as proposed on that piece of property. Is, is it separated by a major thoroughfare from residential uses? It's not. There's a divided arterial there, but there's not a, it's a neighborhood street. It's actually a street that goes nowhere, that's O'Connor Ridge. And. And then will not result in a shortage of land designated for non-residential development. Right now they're 92 acres and that's in your staff report in the PUD. They're still available for office development. We're talking about 4.67 acres, less than 5% of that total, that would be shifted to residential use from that, that office use, which we believe is inappropriate today in the marketplace anyway. Then D, the rezoning is not leave residual track. That's self-evident. We don't, we don't have a residual track left as part of our proposal. And whether there's an appropriate transition, that can be looked at two ways. There's, does it separate, is our residential separated from commercial by a transition? It's not, but our feel is a little more urban with the, the, the multi-story building and we back up to some fairly low-profile commercial and we think it sets up fine. And then on the other side, on the O'Connor Ridge side, we've got that, that four-lane divided thoroughfare, but as it points out, i.e. creek, four-lane roadway, et cetera. And we have that there that separates us across the street, but we're still integrated. Our traffic, by the way, and, and I'll let John come on up here, so as to, to make sure we're using the time, our traffic is not going to circulate down near the residences. We'll use the exact same ingress and egress that was there for the prior office building. So we're not going to change that. And he'll point that out. So can I pass my time here? Sure. This is John Kadenhead with Gory Architects and they're the ones that are designing the project, so.
And just so you know, there's about three minutes left.
Okay.
Sounds good. Thank you, John Kadenhead, Gory Architects. I'll just kind of flip through these real quick. These are just graphically explaining that A, B, C, D, and E are indeed, as Dixon has just described them, but this is indicating that the, the area is physically appropriate for residential use. This is just a quick look at just, you know, what's there as far as zoning, you know, and that, it, you know, that it is adjacent to residential uses right now. This is a look at overall uses and then the impact that, you know, there would be a shortage of land designated for non-residential development would just be very minimal. And again, you know, obviously we've used the entirety of the, of the site. There isn't anything left over that is, that it, we're not leaving anything on, on the land as an interstitial space, you know, that would be awkward for, for residential use. And this is just indicating, you know, sort of the more urban dynamic of the property with the multi-story building. The existing building here, there's a two-level parking structure, which really acts as kind of a buffer between the residential use and then the, the commercial use around it. We'll also use some natural screening with trees and things like that. This is just a look at the overall property and its location with TPC Los Colinas, which we see is just a really great kind of asset to the property. And again, just trying to kind of paint the picture of just, you know, what, the way we see this property and, and its potential uses. This is just showing that, well, there was a couple of letters of opposition about, about traffic. We did a quick traffic study with this, just to see what the impact of 100,000 square feet of an office space would be. It would generate about 974 trips per day. Switching this over to a residential property significantly reduces that by more than half to around 442 estimated trips per day. Just looking at some of...
We have one minute remaining.
Okay, thank you very much. This is the existing conditions of the building, just looking at opportunities for landscape features. But the building really kind of lends itself very well to residential use with, especially with private terraces, you know, in every residence and things like that. Just looking at, you know, sort of the scale of the interior spaces, options for high ceilings, you know, just unaltered, it almost looks like a, like a, like a residence. Again, just sort of illustrating the elevated pool deck as, as a possible offering for open space in the area. And then just looking at the floor plan of this building, I mean, if I were to draw a, a condominium development from scratch, that 82-foot depth is just about perfect. Only for condominium, it wouldn't really work well for multifamily. That would be more like a 70-foot depth. But 82 feet is really perfect for high-end homes. There's the building itself and you can see it's three-bedroom, three-and-a-half baths, you know, average square feet, 3,000 square feet per home. And then the footprint for the tower, even more exclusive with, you know, 3,000 square foot per home, but four homes per floor, private elevator access. This is your smallest unit in the building, again, 2,600 square feet, private elevator access, but large primary bedrooms, walk-in closets, you know, distinguished dining rooms, large, large living spaces, outdoor terraces, 3,000 square feet. So this really illustrates sort of the average floor plan. And they just kind of go up from there. That's 4,500 square foot. It's four-bedroom. Again, just, you know, sort of the overall quality of the development, you know, being, you know, 76 homes, right? This is kind of your, your, your higher-end, you know, sort of penthouse use. And then 4,900 square feet when you consider all of the outdoor space. This is the building dressed up, you know, we, we looked at the black and white photography. Currently it's all red brick. I made it black and white because as an architect, I'm still allergic to red brick. But this is the general look of the building as it faces O'Connor Ridge. There's the impact of the 12-story building behind it as it would be experienced from the residences across the street. There's the overall picture of that building right there. This is a high-quality development. That's the impact. You can, you can see that indeed, most of the parking structure is, is certainly below grade. So the impact is really a 12-story building. There's that elevated pool deck that we would offer as, as a version of open space, if we can entertain that. And then just some of the interiors, primary bedroom overlooking a private terrace and views out towards the golf course.
I think your time is up.
Okay, I was just going to go into you, start me.
Okay. All right. Do the commissioners have questions for the applicant?
Hi. Go ahead. Yes. Can you tell us a little bit about the amenities that the building will have?
Of course. For the, so for, for the, the track to the, the stand of the new building, it's going to have an elevated pool deck area, right? So outdoor kitchens, you know, cabanas for rent, fitness center inside the building, a resident room that residents could rent and use for private parties and things like that. It's got a large lobby attached to it about in excess of 2,000 square feet. The existing former office building will have its own pool at grade. It will have a resident room. It will have a small fitness center and a small lobby. Obviously, there's a lot of outdoor areas around there for walking trails, outdoor kitchens, gazebos, things like that.
What about concierge?
Yes, concierge as well.
For both?
For both.
Now, you mentioned, so the smallest condo will be 2,600 square feet.
That's correct.
Right, so it will be a three-bedroom?
Three-bedroom, two-and-a-half baths with a dining room.
Now, I'm just guessing this, I guess the, both properties are going to be, I mean, separate. I mean, I do understand the concept of both HOAs, which is great, actually. I do understand that and it makes sense, so, but they're going to be two independent buildings?
Right, there'll be two individual buildings, of course, and especially as far as the HOA is concerned. So let's say, for example, if I live in the former office building, I don't have a key card that can get me into the tower building and up into the pool deck, right? Now, if I had a friend over there and invited me, oh, sure, we could do that. But they are not fenced off from each other, so the grounds can be used by any of the residents in the area, right? So they're, I mean, it'll feel like one property, but as far as HOAs are concerned, they, they need to be divided into two distinct properties.
Perfect.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'll probably come back with other questions, but...
No problem.
Other questions? Commissioner Sanguino, do you, do you have those additional questions?
Well, I guess more than questions will be, well, I don't know if I want to leave it for comments, then after you close it off from, for, leave it for comments, I'll probably leave my addition, leave some comments for later on.
Your comments, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. No, no more questions for the applicant? No? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of this item? Anybody in opposition? Sir?
Hello, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Brent Charlino and I'm the President of Fairway Vista Homeowners Association. And I also am the owner of Lot 69, which is within 200 feet. My, my basic comment is first, we were only made aware of this plan probably 10 days to two weeks ago. And last Monday, I believe the 28th, is when they had a meeting. A number of the people, in fact, Lot 70 resident is here. We weren't available to go to that meeting because we had such little time to react. So we really don't know what's happening. And also with the, the residents have come back to me as President of the Association and feel like there has not been enough information given as to really what the plan is and how it impacts. O'Connor Ridge Road doesn't go nowhere. It goes into a number of different residences, which are all what I'll call low-slung residences of high quality. And I understand that these are high quality and we may or may not be for it, but we really haven't had enough time or information to know how it's going to be structured, what the impact is on that road or to us, security-wise. We've had a lot of issues. I've been there three years and in that three years, this building has been vacant, so it would be nice for something to happen to it. But putting a 12-story high-rise is going to look right into a number of our backyards. And so what's the security issue going to be on O'Connor Ridge and what's the impact to the other associations that are there? So my comment in opposition is to respectfully request some more information and maybe have some more meetings with the direct residents that are within the 200 feet and with those homeowners association boards so that we can understand what happens. It's an important part of our community. Going up O'Connor Ridge roads, it goes into the enclave, the residence and Fairway Vista, and it's also adjacent to the turn that goes into the view. So thank you very much for listening to my comments. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak in opposition to this item? Would the applicant like to respond?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, the, the only response I would have, we, we did meet with the, the association members that we could get in contact with last Monday. We had been attempting to do that since March and we were instructed by the Los Colinas Association to go through them, that they wouldn't provide us with the contact information. That was fine. And that they were going to disseminate that information, that we needed to provide them a map of which neighborhoods we wanted, so we did all of that. And then right before we were ready to have the notice go out, they determined for their own reasons, and, and that's fine, it just didn't fit the timing, was that they weren't comfortable doing that. And they didn't want to send those out. And, but they would give us the contact information for the President of each of the organizations. So they gave us those and by the time we had those, they, they came like one one day, two the next, one the next. And so by the time we had them, we'd already booked the meeting location at the Omni and we had, we had a room, had it set up. So we wanted to move forward with that. And so we, we were able to get, I think we had 18 people at the meeting last Monday. We spent, we had, we'd booked for an hour. We spent an hour, like an hour and 48 minutes in the meeting and we had a lot of great back and forth and give and take, took a lot of input. That's where we got the name change idea. And when I say the road goes to nowhere, what I mean, that's not a major thoroughfare that's running a lot of, of traffic back and forth all day, every day that we will feed into, that will cause wear and tear or, or additional traffic on down, down the road into the subdivisions. So anyway, just wanted to be clear, we did meet with the residents. We, we're open throughout this to, to stay in contact with the residents. We want that input because we want to be something that they can be proud of and we want to be part of that community. And I will say that the, our client owns that property. This isn't a contract that's contingent upon zoning. They own it. And so they're, they're invested. They, they tore down the parking garage. They're invested there and they want to make a, a project that, that not only they can be proud of, but the surrounding community and all of Irving can be proud of.
Thank you. I just had a quick question following up on, on that. So it sounded like, I mean, y'all were doing your best with sort of the, as you understood the situation, to try and get in contact with the neighbors.
Right, we, we had been, from day one, we were, we've got to meet with the neighbors.
No, but, but I mean, but unfortunately, it, it sounds like it...
It just, we, we had, we had a good meeting, but...
Worked out.
Yeah, we, we, it would have been great if we'd had more, more folks.
I mean, that, that happens sometimes, but a lot of times when that sort of situation comes up, one of the questions comes up is whether you'd be open to a postponement till the next meeting to give you some time to, now that you're in contact with those people to, to have those, those chances to talk to them.
Right, we, we would love to be approved. We're, we're in this for the long haul, right? So we'd love to be approved tonight. That's, that's obviously our preference, to go to the council on 29. But if that isn't going to happen because commissioner, commission doesn't feel it's got the information it needs or feel like there needs to be additional outreach, we're happy to do that. You know, we want to keep it moving forward because we want to make this project a reality. So we would, we would respectfully ask for your vote tonight in favor. But if that's, if the alternative were to be a denial, we would prefer the, the alternative be, the ultimate alternative be a postponement to allow us to, to continue to work it through.
I would have to agree with Commissioner Skinner and I think the, the short time notice that she gives the residents, especially with the height and everything else, their concerns about seeing in their backyard, stuff like that. I think some of these details, I mean, they've invested a lot of money in this city. They live here, it's their quality of life. And I think that we should give them some more time to look at it if you're open to a postponement.
Yeah, and, and again, we are, we'd, we'd love, I'm honest, we'd love to be approved. I mean, that's why we're here. But, you know, if there is, if there's concern on your parts that, and feel like, you feel like that's beneficial and that's the direction we should go, then, then, then yes.
It's a concern that they come here to address and it's a concern that you brought out yourself as far as saying that there was limited...
No, it's...
Et cetera.
Right.
So I think we should give the residents a little bit more time if that's acceptable.
And that's acceptable.
You or we can rule on it tonight. That's your choice.
No, it's acceptable to postpone it.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I was just going to say the same thing. I think, you know, 18 residents isn't that whole community.
Right.
You know, there's a lot more that's been left out, so making sure that they have the opportunity and for you to hear from them and, and then also to look at that height because there's nothing else over there that's that tall. So I'm sure there's other people that live in that area that's concerned with the height of the tower. I, I can appreciate taking that vacant building and, and doing something with it, it makes sense. But that type of height on that second tower, that does concern me.
Right, and we, and we believe we can demonstrate as we look at it and if we move forward, you know, with a postponement and we, and we go talk about it, that the impact is not going to be as it might appear on a sheet of paper, you know, because of the difference in grade. So, so yes, I mean, if that's the direction that, that the commission chooses to go tonight, we certainly will work with the postponement and, and move forward.
I just have a quick question, Mr. Holman.
Yes.
Are the finish outs that you all showed us the same for both the three-story building as well as the tower?
I believe the answer to that question is, is yes, they're very similar. They'll, they'll have, they may have sort of a different scheme just to give them individuality, but the quality finishes that, that we're trying to demonstrate, and because of my long windings, we didn't get to, to a few others you could have seen, but it's, they will all be, that's, that's the only way we can command the per-square-foot price. And again, these are for sale, so we're looking for people to invest in moving there and living there. So that's, that's the goal. And, and they'll all be HOA-controlled, they'll be rent-restricted, no STRs, you know, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant?
What would be your, your timeline for this project? I mean, ideally, to get started on this?
Yeah, well, depending on how long it takes us to get approval, but it's not going, you know, let's say that's a couple of months, right? It would take, I think we're looking at about two and a half years from now through design, construction, to completion. Is that correct? So, so it'd be about two and a half years from now.
For both buildings?
For both buildings, because the one building's already there, so we just have to come in and, and, you know, reskin it and put the new interior in.
Mr. Lightfoot?
I, I always thought that three-story building was spectacular, just the way it sits. It's just a very cool setting, location. I really like the idea of the adaptive reuse. I think that's just thoughtful, particularly if it's not red brick. We have a lot of red brick. Tower two I'm concerned about. So I, I appreciate your willingness to maybe postpone, so that you can talk to more of the Fairway Vista folks. I know when the View project was being built, that was an incredibly helpful process for the View people to get comfortable with the rosewood piece that was going in closer to 114.
Right.
So I know it might not be your preference, but I think I'm not comfortable with track two. Track one I like, but we're building one.
That's, we're at your pleasure.
If we move to a postponement today, I would recommend that the homeowners associations, you, everybody try to reach out to as many people as possible, and try to have that meeting to discuss that.
Yeah, we'll definitely do it, because now we've got at least the primary contacts, so, and those relationships we've established, so.
All right. All right. No other questions for the applicant? No? Great.
Yeah, I was just going to mention real quick, Debbie and I serve on the HOA board. If we can't get in touch with sub-HOAs, we just go hang door hangers. Like, you know, at this date, this time, there's a meeting, come show up. That way you'll have a lot more confidence to show that we, we got to these many people, and there's a good faith effort shows on your part.
Right, and we're, and we're willing to do those things. What we didn't want to do is step on the, the Los Calinas Association's toes and start moving about, because even when we put up signs, we decided to put up signs on the property when we couldn't make contact, and we got them all ready to go, and we told the Association we were going to do it, and they said, you can't put those out. Our architecture committee has to approve your signs, and that will take two to three weeks. And we said, well, the meeting will have been over, and so will the planning and zoning hearing for about a week and a half. By the time that happens, they expedited that, but we just tried to be really careful that we didn't cross any lines, because we're going to work with the architecture committee as we, we have to. But we've already been in contact with them and been, been meeting. We haven't made our submission, because they want us to do that after we get through this. But we've been having conversations with them, and they're going to go through our entire project, and, you know, all of our architectural features and, and the like. So we're just trying to be respectful of everybody we need to be respectful of.
And I think we appreciate that, that you were trying to do in the right way, and it's just, since it didn't work out on the timing before.
Right.
We, we appreciate, or I certainly do, your openness to, to a postponement as a, as a way to have a chance to really have those communications with, with the neighbors.
Yes, sir.
Obviously, you want to have a good relationship with them, too.
Sure.
So.
Will this building have access to the golf course?
At, at this time, no, it won't have direct access. We're, we're having, we're, we've had some initial discussions, the ownership group has, with, with the, the golf course, the club, you know, just to, to make them aware that we're, we're here, and find ways to be able to, I don't know, right word, interact with that amenity, but it won't have official access, although there might be. We have, there is a place to do that, as you see from our site plan, so that could, you know, for just card access, that kind of thing. So that could be done, and those are discussions that we would have ongoing as we work through, so.
How long a postponement you think you need to?
I mean, I, I would think at this point, you know, it would be, I don't, what is the next commission meeting date?
The next one is June 2nd.
2nd.
And then what's the one after that?
Staff, what do we have as far as?
And then the next one after that is July 7th.
Okay. I, I think what we would want is, at this time, June 2nd, and let us see what we can, what we can do in 30 days, roughly.
Do we have enough on the, you said we have a heavy agenda, so, okay.
And that way, if, you know.
Does that work for?
Yeah.
If you'd come up to the mic, please.
Can you come up to the mic? Yeah.
I will. I'll commit to have the board get together at Fairway Vista by this Friday.
Okay.
Okay? And discuss that with them, and if I can get contact information.
So June 2nd works for you also?
We'll try to make that work, but sure.
Okay. Okay, I encourage you to reach out to the other ones, the other associations and their presidents and et cetera.
But I'll get, I know the guy, I know the folks I can get right away, and then I'll reach out, and we have some other folks with us, so we're, you know, we're trying to make that a better place, too, just all of its new.
Well, the applicant's willing to give you some more time to get you caught up and try to get you figured out, so everybody comes into an agreeance or disagreement on y'all's side, but he's willing to do that. So I think that's a huge step on the applicant's part.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner, very much. Thank you.
So, yes, we're, we're willing to do that, and I mean, if it doesn't, if we don't feel like we've made enough progress, obviously, we would, we would come back ahead of time, let staff know, and, and be able to, to ask you to move it down the line. But, but I'd rather we, we say June 2nd, it sort of gives everybody a goal, finish line, so if that works.
All right. All right.
Are we going to do both cases?
Well, we, first, we have to close the public hearing.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. So, yeah, so if public hearings closed, first, we're only on the, the item number nine, because we do have to vote on them separately, but if we're voting to move them, we, I take it we'd be moving it to the next meeting in June, on June 2nd, so a postponement to that specific date. So unless there's discussion, somebody wants to make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to move Comprehensive Plan 2025-64-CP to postpone it to June 2nd.
2nd.
All right, we have a motion and a second, or to postpone. Please vote. And the motion passes unanimously. And then the companion case, item 10, Development Plan 2025-65-DVP and Multifamily Concept Plan 2025-66-MFCP, again, located at 251 O'Connor Ridge Boulevard. I, sir, I assume you're done presenting. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of this item? Anybody in opposition? Nope, then I'll return to the Commission for any discussion, if there is any, and then a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to move Development Plan 2025-65-DVP and Multifamily Concept Plan 2025-66-MFCP to postpone it to be taken up June 2nd.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to postpone to the June 2nd meeting. Please vote. And the motion passes unanimously. All right, on to item number 11. Zoning Case 2025-95-ZC, located at 1018 East Union Bower Road. Is the applicant present? Yes. Would you like to come up? So we, we did discuss it some over in the work session, but I don't know if you got to hear that, but would we give you a chance to present or answer any questions?
Yes, my name is Veronica Hernandez, and we're here for the case 1018 East Union Bower Road. This is the owner and my dad.
How's that, Hernandez? Are y'all doing that? Yeah, is the?
Sorry? Oh, can you hear me?
Ah, yes, much better.
Okay. Do you want me to repeat my name and address? Yes? Okay, Veronica Hernandez, and we're here for a case 1018 East Union Bower Road. Again, the owner and my father is here.
How's that, Hernandez?
Okay, so, right now, we're looking to make better use of the land that is available, and to provide additional housing in the area. We think that it'll be a good fit for the area, just because there is a permit complex right across the street, there is, again, another permit complex adjacent across the street, duplexes right next door, right next to the fence. And then if you go down maybe 100 feet down Nursery, there is another couple duplexes as well. So this is going to be about, I think, 1,300 feet, or 1,300 square feet per unit, so we're going to be focusing more on family, small family. I was in the PNC meeting, and I did hear maybe some concern regarding parking, but there is additional land in the back, so we can add about two to four additional parking spots, if that's a concern for you guys. But other than that, I don't think I have any questions for you. The only other thing, actually, is, right now, we're only looking to develop, to develop the one side of the land. The other side wouldn't be for many years down the line. I only have the financial availability to do the one at this time. So that is also going to be something that is up to my dad, if he wants to continue to develop. We want to make sure that, that's something that is needed in the community before we continue to move forward with the second portion. So, do you guys have any questions for me?
Yeah, thank you, yeah. Do any of the Commissioners have questions to the applicant?
So just want to confirm, the front of the building is facing Union Bower?
Yes. Yes, it is, yes. And then I think there was also a concern with the fire lane, maybe, but we did, I don't know if this is on or not. I'm not sure if that's on or not, but.
They can switch it over.
So here, you can see that the fire lane, there is enough room for the fire lane as well, in that 30-foot radius that's needed. So again, this is just an illustrative view.
Ms. Hernandez, how do they get back to the parking?
So we're going to do a shared easement.
Where it says new driveway?
Right, right in the center, and then it's going to break off either way.
And are y'all planning on keeping that existing residence?
For now, yes. For now? For now, yes.
Until the new construction, if y'all do plan on?
If we do plan on moving forward with that, yes. Of course, we have to make sure that there's a need for it before, you know, starting all over again with the second half of it. But we think it'll fit well in the area, and as well, we did try to keep it more residential looking, because there are residential houses in the area. But like I said, right across the street, it's commercial, and, you know, so I don't think that it'll be an eyesore.
Can you briefly talk to the amenities and look and feel of these units?
Um, let's see, is, I don't know if you guys have the illustrated, okay. So there aren't any amenities. This is more, again, it's for, focused towards single-family. I don't know that they're on here, actually.
You said about 1,300 square feet for each unit?
Right. Approximately, yes. Yes.
How many bedrooms, baths?
It's three-bedroom, two and a half bath, I believe. Let me try to get, I'm going to try to find the floor plan, if that's something that you're wanting to see.
One minute remaining.
Oh, sorry.
One question. One, one question.
So this is, can we turn on the?
Yeah, can you switch over the?
This is, this is what it will look like, floor plan-wise inside, and that's mimicked top and bottom.
Have you ever done anything like this before?
No, I haven't. Could you tell? So, yes, this is my first time doing it.
Ms. Hernandez, do you have any idea of what you're charging per square foot?
Um, I honestly don't. I think I'd have to get recommendation from, I believe you guys have, or Irving has, a suggestive rate per unit, per room, or something like that. I want to say it was like 1,700, 1,800, but I'm not exactly sure what you guys are recommending. I know it's online, I'd have to check. As of 2025, I believe it was updated.
Definitely want to, definitely want to stay comparative with the area, you know? And would it be, what, two units on the bottom and two units on the top?
Yes. Yeah. And of course, right there, you can see that the stairs are in the front, but they were hidden behind to make sure that it keeps that residential look. They were hidden behind the exterior walls, they're in the front.
Mr. Lightfoot? Did you get a question?
Yeah, how much are you renting them out for?
Um, at least 1,800 per month, but again, we have to check what the recommendation is, because I know it's online, that if it's two units, it's this much, or three, or three rooms, it's this much. Yeah. You haven't seen that?
Are you referring to Section 8?
Um.
The recommendations? Because I don't think the City of Irving gives rent recommendations.
I've seen it before, and my aunt actually works for the City of Irving as well, not here. It's more like Irving Cares, but she has a paperwork where it's like one bedroom around this much, two bedroom around that much. So, and it's online, I've, I've found it before. Not exactly sure, I should have brought it, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you may be mentioning about housing statistics or something like that, of what they go about, but I don't think the City of Irving makes any recommendations as to.
Okay.
So, let me ask you, so you're, this house, that's where you all live right now currently? Or are you all buying this house?
That is where I currently live now. I live there part-time. I have other properties. So I go back and forth between them. So we're just looking to beautify this one area there. There's quite a few of them that are being built. I've lived in Irving approximately about 20, 25 years, and I've seen, Irving's getting old, as you know, and I've seen some of the old structures being brought down, and I've seen some of the newer houses being brought up, and so this is our way to invest in the area and beautify it a little bit. We're going to be competitive as far as the market's concerned. We definitely are doing our homework in that, but, you know, we're not going to finance it, so it's not going to be an issue. But, you know, we're just trying to make this, use of this land that's actually there. I've, I've bought it 99, 2,000, and so we're just going to build something there, and if it works out, it looks good, then we'll build the other one right next door to it.
How many parking spaces would you be providing?
Um, it looks like there's eight parking spaces, but again, if that's a concern, we can always add a few more as well, because there's more land in the back. And regarding the rent, of course, we can look at that as well, so it's not going to be financed, so it's not going to be something that's tied to a loan.
You pressed it.
I didn't press it, but me.
Oh, it's not going to be tied to a loan where I have to make sure that I'm at a certain point in order to be able to pay the loan, so.
Well, I'll just make the comment of, I think your concept is really nice, and, and it's definitely going to make a good improvement for the Irving area, especially that area.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? No? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak in favor of this item? Is there anybody who'd like to speak in opposition to this item? No, then I'll return it to the Commission for discussion and a motion.
If no, does?
Mr. Reyes?
Did anyone have any comments about their?
Yeah, I did. Mr. Ahmed, yeah.
Yeah, so I, I feel that some of it is a little premature. Some of the things that I look for from considering it is, what kind of rent is being charged? What does the interior look like? Make sure that it beautifies the neighborhood, and the look and feel is good. The illustration that we have is very vague, and we don't really know what amenities or what they want the interior to look like. Also, I have a little concern, I'm not sure it should be, but it's very close to the residential, because they have a house right next door, with no timeline when they would put a building there or put a duplex over there.
I, I would mention that I can hear your concerns, however, for the applicant, I would just suggest that they may just consider contacting a Realtor or other to get a comparative analysis, and that's for them to come up with that price point. It since would be their property, and I'm assuming property managing as well. It since would be their property and I'm assuming property managing as well. I do also, about your other comment about the residential properties, I would say it conforms and it is a good fit based on the apartments and it is a nice transition, especially, I would just make the comment that I, I do feel like they would have a good opportunity here with the fourplex and does not seem to me as a concern for that single family to then eventually be turned over to an additional fourplex. So if there is no other further comments, I'd like... Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I, I don't wanna disapprove or approve anyone's...
Can you put your microphone down below?
I'm sorry. Their request based on how much they're gonna rent property for, we have several people that bring in plans and developments that what they are gonna rent that property for is not our decision. Our decision is really based on their requests from R7 to SP2. And that's what I'm gonna base my decision on. And so I have no reason not to support this. So Alicia, if you want to make a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Lightfoot?
One more time. This area of South Irving is changing a lot. I mean, they're taking a lot of houses down. There's a lot of duplexes that are going up. They're just two stories, not necessarily one story with a second. It is changing, so I, I can support this. I have a little bit of concern. I don't like putting two-story homes right in somebody's backyard. A lot of people does not like seeing, you know, being, people being able to watch them from the upstairs. But we send out notices and I encourage people, if that's gonna be an issue in the future, to, you know, turn in your notices or show up to our meetings. But at this point, I can support it. We don't have the opposition of concern for it.
One more. So, I mean, I'm looking at it probably from the highest and best use of the land and what might be, if this works in the neighborhood, I mean, it looks like there's multifamily nearby. And in my, in my work there, I mean, given that it's a fourplex, at least on, as in real estate, a fourplex is still considered residential, not commercial. So, I mean, I, I mean, I would like it if it was both lots or both at the same time going on. But I do understand why doing it halfway. I mean, there may be some financial situation where you want to try it out and see if it works out and so that may be some reason. It looks like the, the resident has lived there for, for 20-plus years and established residence in the City of Irving too, so, I mean, I think I, I can support it.
Any further discussion? So Commissioner Reyes, are you wanting to make a motion?
Yes, if there's no other further discussion, I'd like to make a motion for zoning case 2025-95-ZC to get forwarded to City Council for approval.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second recommending approval. Please vote. And the motion passes unanimously. So it does still go to council, so you still need to go to council and get their approval because they make the final decision. But it will go with a recommendation of approval.
By the way, I thought you did an excellent job for somebody who said you'd never done this before. You sounded like a pro.
Alright, item number 12, Special Fence Plan 2025-103-SFP located at 800 Elwood Road. Is the applicant present? Sir? If you could state your name and address?
Sure, my name's Rogelio Castro. I live at 1309 East Union Bower Road. And I'm actually here for the owner and the applicant for this fence project. So as you guys were discussion, were discussing in your work session, that fence has been there forever. I mean, since like the 90s, honestly, like the late 90s, that fence was there even whenever that roadway was upgraded, whatever that was, 15 years ago or 12 years ago. Nobody made a mention of it being non-compliant as far as like to say something while we had inspectors and everything out there. So, I mean, I don't know what their, the concern was just because I decided to replace some fence, I guess. Because my neighbor on the backside hit the fence and broke it and I've got a tenant there now that has a young child. So it'd be a little bit more for them. We decided to replace it while we were there, well, let's just make it look a little nicer. But now I guess I'm into, I'm having to come before you guys to see about getting a fence permit or a special fence permit. And as it is, you guys were talking about how the size of it, it is currently about 45 feet wide. If I take away the 15 or 25 foot, I was told it was 15 foot, that I was gonna have to come back in. You guys are saying 25 foot in your work session. I don't know which one's the right number, but speaking to the staff and the zoning and code and all that, they were telling me it's 15 foot in from the property line. So I'm not sure which one's right, but that would make that like a 20-foot backyard. And it's, I mean, it's tiny compared to, for anybody to have it and enjoy it. I mean, you know, where it is now, it's a good, it's a decent sized little backyard. It's not terrible. Like I said, and then that particular tenant does have a couple of young children, so it's nice for them to have somewhere to put, put them safely. So, I don't know, any questions?
One question that came up in the work session was, it looked like you hadn't finished replacing the fence?
So there's a tree where that fence isn't completed and we were talking, we were thinking about jogging it, but then I got the thing from code and so we just stopped everything and just, just left it alone. But there's a tree there, so we'll probably have to end up doing a jog there, just to keep that tree out, out of the fenced-in area. That way we can allow it to grow and just keep going.
So you were planning on finishing it, but then you got the notice from code, so you stopped to wait to find out?
Yeah, everything's, from the illustration to that center fence has been replaced pretty much. All the way to where you guys saw where that last little six-foot section's not done. But there's a tree there in that corner, I was just gonna jog around it and kind of leave it outside of the fenced-in area and let it grow and get its roots going proper.
Alright, any other questions for the applicant?
If you get approved tonight, are you gonna, you're gonna pull a permit and go ahead and meet building inspections and everything?
Yeah, it's not a problem. I mean, like I told them, everything, everything's there that was originally there. It was all, the posts are all there. I just pulled the panels.
Repair and everything, but after you do a certain amount, I think building inspections kicks in. So, but you're gonna go ahead and pull the permit and everything else, right?
Yes, sir. Well, and all of that's kind of on, on hold until we get this sorted and then, once this is sorted, then they'll give me the permit.
Okay.
I'm kind of going back to, to his question, so you're planning on replacing the whole fence?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I kind of heard you in the work session about why not do the whole thing. Well, we'll do the whole thing, that's not a problem. But so long as I'm allowed to keep proceeding.
Perfect, so if, any other further comments?
We haven't, we haven't done the public hearing portion, so. Any, any, any other, yeah, any other questions for the applicant? No? Okay, thank you very much.
Perfect, no problem, thank you.
Is there anybody who'd like, anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of this item? Anybody in opposition? No? Then I'll return it to the commission for any discussion and a motion.
I'll just make a comment. I just want to appreciate, thank the applicant for coming. I, I know this process can be a little frustrating, getting cited for something that was there before, but, so I appreciate you coming.
So on, on the Special Fence Plan 2025-103-SFP, I make a motion for approval.
I'll second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second recommending approval. Please vote. And the motion passes unanimously. We are on to item 13 and I'm going to turn the meeting over to Vice Chair Hack and she will be in charge for the remainder of the meeting.
Good evening, we're on zoning case 2025-104-ZC. Thank you very much. Oh, thank you. This is located at 1901 West Irving Boulevard, from professional office to commercial office. Is the applicant present? Would you come down, please give us your name and address?
Good evening, my name is Hajra Kaliquzaman. I am the owner of this building along with my husband. We have our office right in the, in the building, 1901 West Irving Boulevard. And so this building was completely damaged during the 2021 flooding and freeze. So we've been re, completely redid the whole building and now we have about four suites. We occupy one of them as a, as a, it's zoned for professional office. We have another suite that's already been rented out. We have another tenant who would like to use it for a technical school and the PO doesn't allow for a technical school, so I contacted the Planning and Zoning Committee, spoke to Gina and she had recommended that CO might be a good fit, especially because it's on the future plans for that space. So that's why I'm here. Any questions for me, I could answer?
So, yes, so let me ask you, what are your current tenants? How many spaces you have available for lease and how many tenants you have?
We have four suites available. It's, the whole space is about 10,000 square feet. So we have a Zumba studio, we have a tax office, which is, we own the tax office, so we occupy that space. Then this is actually going to be a technical school to teach and repair HVAC and coolers. And then the fourth space is currently vacant. We're looking at a prospect, a prospect who is going to be like a clinica or something like that, that might come in.
Like a what?
Like a clinic?
Okay.
That might, a small like walk-in clinic that might come.
Like, okay.
Yeah.
Well, and I think the, the CO will allow you to have that as well?
Yes, all four of them.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. You used to have a barber's school there, right?
Mm-hmm, so yeah, we did have a barber school, but unfortunately they were not able, they were not able to get the income that they were looking at. So they ended up wanting to break the lease, so we had to. So the space that is currently open that doesn't have a tenant, that possibly will have a, a clinic or something, was the original barber space. But then he wasn't able to pay rent and so we were, we allowed them to break the lease.
Are, how long have you owned this building?
2020.
And are you planning on doing anything to the, there is some vacant land?
Yes, there is vacant land. We, we spent all of our money trying to get this rehab, but we do want to do something with that vacant land. We still have, we have reached out to the city, but we wanted to get this one taken care of and then to try to talk to the planning, I believe Christina from, I don't know if she was from Planning and Zoning, but she had recommended someone we can speak to to see what options we may have there to do. So we, maybe we can do something that's another commercial unit, like a building? Or I don't know, like we just want to kind of explore those options. We haven't really decided, but we want to develop it, yes.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions for the applicant? Is there anyone else here, present, who would like to speak in favor of this item? If so, you're welcome to speak. Seeing none, anyone here speak in opposition? I see no one. If there are no other speakers in favor or opposition, then I will close the item to the floor and return it to the commission for discussion or a motion.
If there's no other discussion, I'd like to make a motion for zoning case 2025-104-ZC to be moved to City Council for approval.
I'll second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, please vote. Congratulations, your, your motion passes, it'll be forwarded to City Council for the final vote. Thank you very much, good luck. On behalf of Chairman Skinner, thank you everyone, and meeting's adjourned at 8:36 PM.